I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the February 24th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, you'll have to contact Robert who just ran through the back room.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a motion on the agenda?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion. Second, are there any corrections or is there any additions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of February 17th, 2015.
Is there a motion on the minutes?
Moved to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the minutes. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
We paid in the amount of $333,233.43. And there was an adjustment just this morning as of what was posted, and it was an Excel Energy bill that was, needed a correction.
Is there a motion on the bills?
Pay the bills. Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any other comments on the bills? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The auditor's account with the county treasurer as of January 31st, 2015, has been received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. And item B is a presentation of the 2014 annual report for the Minnehaha County Office of the Public Advocate.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I submitted the report.
Do you want to start by identifying yourself? I think some of us don't know you yet.
My name is Julie Hofer. I am the head of the Public Advocate's Office. Started in January when Cindy Howard retired. I filed the annual report. As expected, the caseload has gone up. We opened 1,601 cases in 2004, and we closed 1,393. That was an increase from 2013 of 264 cases. We currently have six attorneys in our office. Well, right now we have five, but we will have six starting on Monday. We have a new attorney starting. The caseload that we carry indicates it would be the equivalent of 7.25 attorneys. As indicated, I just anticipate that the caseload will continue to increase. Our office does a good job of keeping up with it. We have very experienced and dedicated attorneys.
Are there any questions for Julie on her report?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
I asked Robert to put up some of the numbers here showing the cases. And here you can see the cases opened, cases closed, going up from 922, opened in 2010, to 1601 in 2014. I mean, this is a huge increase. And, by the way, Julie, congratulations on getting that job.
Thank you.
And that dramatic increase seems to be continuing as it goes forward. You're, we're not expecting a decline in 2015 or 2016. Julie, how many murder cases are you guys on right now?
Right now, we currently have one murder case. We just closed one last month.
Okay.
It's also interesting that felony, or the misdemeanor cases also compose 50% or about of our cases. Is that correct by what I'm looking at? And the number's pretty much stayed consistent that they're running 50% in misdemeanor cases.
Correct.
Are there any other questions for Julie?
Madam Chair, I'd just point out that this is indicative of the increase in crime that we've had to contend with, and that is strapping our budget and preventing us from taking care of all of our duties as, or funding all of our duties as much as we would like.
Any other questions? Thank you, Julie. Thank you.
Item five is personnel actions. A, consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action.
Is there a motion for the routine actions?
Make a motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, then.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Keri.
Good morning. Keri Dever from Human Resources. The next item that we have for you is I'm requesting your approval on some updates to the Minnehaha County Information Technology Policy. I briefed you on this a couple of weeks ago. You might remember that this was actually collaborative effort between Lincoln County and our office, or Minnehaha County. The IT departments worked together along with Human Resources to craft a policy that we thought would be comprehensive and appropriate for both. You might also recall that we didn't have a lot of substantive changes. We consolidated some language from Minnehaha County. The proposed draft also includes additional examples of prohibited uses. And we're clarifying that any type of monitoring of IT resources can only be done with the approval of the person with legal supervisory authority. After the draft from earlier this month, Commissioner Bender also brought up a couple of additional suggestions that we wanted to incorporate into the policy regarding prohibited uses and preservation of electronic records. The policy is extraordinarily long, but comprehensive, and we feel as though it's a good draft document for us to include in both our handbook and then on our website as well for department head and our policies and procedures, regulations. So today I'm asking for your approval if you're comfortable with the draft.
Are there any questions for Keri? We reviewed this last week or two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Look for a motion.
And make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve the information technology usage policy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Keri.
Thank you.
Item six is application for abatement. Kyle Halsaf.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Halsaf, Director of Equalization. We bring forward this morning three requests for abatements. All three of them share one thing: the houses were removed, either by fire or by dump truck. The first one is for Nicholas S. McMillan, record ID 12901, for the amount of taxes of $710.13. Item B is for Jake Coburn, record ID 77371, and the property taxes in the amount of $532.72. And the third is Christine Amidal, record ID 80787, property taxes in the amount of $907.09.
Are there any questions for Kyle on those abatements? I would look for a motion for all three.
I move for approval for abatement.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve all three abatements, a record ID number 1290012, 12901, record ID 77371, and record ID number 80787. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. It's Kyle.
Item seven is notice and request. A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for asphalt surface treatment on Minnehaha County highways 105, 109, 131, 133, and 141, approximately 38.5 miles. D.J. Boothey.
Morning Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This is a contract for our annual chip seal program. We've done chip seal as part of our pavement preservation for many years, and this year we're looking at doing just over 38 miles, I believe. And if you have any questions, I can answer them right now.
Are there any questions for D.J. on this project? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the audit to publish notice to bidders. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is petition for compromise of lien. Commissioner Burr.
Thank you. This is for DPNO 76423. We've received a request for a compromise on a $681.40 county lien. The applicant is requesting a release of the lien with no payment in consideration of the $430 already paid on this for public defender services and some human services that he previously paid in full. So applicant is working on, living on his, making his life work better, and he wants to go back to school. He needs a vehicle. He's saved $500 for a down payment. His income is $748 a month and pretty much takes most of his income. The commission denied a request for the same party a year ago. The applicant has made steady monthly payments since then totaling $430, which is 39% of the lien. And looking at it, I see that there have been 13 payments made, varying amounts, and certainly that's a pretty consistent record of making payments. I don't know if the applicant is here. If he is, he can speak from his position without identifying himself and without coming to the podium. So if he's here...
Is the applicant in the audience?
Okay. Well, not seeing him, I am going to make a motion to compromise this lien for a payment of an additional $40.
Is there a second to that? Is there a second? Motion dies for a lack of the second. Is there any discussion or comments on this compromise?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
You know, again, making steady payments is commendable, and certainly making payments monthly or better, because I, it seems to me I see 13 payments over the last 12 months or so. It's pretty, it's a good sign, and I think that that behavior deserves some recognition. So I look upon my fellow colleagues here for a motion.
Just to make a comment on the narrative here. This person uses a representative payee. They live strictly on social security benefits. I don't feel like they, I think that they've made a valiant effort to, to try to satisfy this lien as best they can. I don't think that this is, I feel like you're trying to squeeze money out of somebody who doesn't have it anyway.
Is there a motion you would prefer, Madam Chair?
I would do the motion with no additional pay.
I'm sorry.
With no additional pay, excuse me.
All right. Well, I will make a motion to accept the offer of no additional payments, releasing the lien in full.
Is there a second to Commissioner Burr's?
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second to release the lien for 76423 in the amount of $681.40. Is there any comments? Are there any comments? I have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when if you would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda, you would come forward and, and bring that issue forward and tell us your name and address. I don't see anyone, so we'll move on.
We have two minutes.
Okay.
Before the public hearing, so we will move to item number 12. It's consider a bid award for Project MC 14-50-082-110, the replacement of structure 50-082-110 located on 255th Street between 462nd and 463rd Avenues, approximately four miles north of Hartford. D.J. Boothey.
Good morning Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. We received bids for this structure replacement that we've been talking about on Township Road System. The structure, just a quick review, the structure is currently load limited. It's a 41-foot single-span concrete pony truss with a concrete deck. Sufficiency rating currently is 24.2. Average daily traffic is five on this structure. And we received bids, we received five bids for the structure. The engineer's cost estimate was somewhere around $470,000 or $75,000. The low bidder is Cram Construction, who we worked with on several projects last year. Their low bid is $378,293.75. We've reviewed this bid much more thoroughly, I guess, than most of the bids that we reviewed just because the, the cost is so much less than what the engineer's cost estimate was. And basically what we found is there's not a single item or a couple items that were bid in air or anything like that. It's just really consistently, everything is lower than, than the rest of the bidders. Not so much lower that they raise red flags, just, just lower. So we are recommending the award. The engineer and the project is also recommending the award, and so we hope for your approval in awarding this contract.
Okay. Are there any questions for D.J. on this? Commissioner Bennigan.
D.J., what's a projection of how many people we use this bridge if it's fixed?
It's hard for us to estimate that just because we don't have traffic analysis on our Township Road Systems. I would expect that it would increase a small amount to maybe match other traveled Township Roads in that area, which might be between 25 and 50 cars per day in this area. I would probably err on the lower side of that, maybe towards 25. But without, without replacing it, it's hard to say without any kind of a traffic model in that area.
Commissioner?
And we've never done a traffic model on a Township Road. I haven't heard of that being done before, so it's only an estimate.
D.J., do you expect that despite the fact that it's a fairly low bid relative to the engineer's estimate, that this company will be able to perform the task?
We are confident that they will be able to perform the task of completing the project. We definitely wouldn't be recommending a ward if we had reservations there. The contractor is required to get a performance bond as part of our contract requirements. So if they for any reason aren't able to complete it, we will be able to go after their bond and complete the project yet this year, hopefully.
Madam Chair, if I might. Cindy Johnson, do you know, did they, is this one of the ones that they're required to have a bond?
All of the highway construction bids are required a payment bond and a performance bond.
Thank you.
Yep, and they did respond with a 10% bond with their bid.
Commissioner Kelly.
D.J., you say you think it might go from five to 20 to 30 a day. What, what would cause that increase?
Well, right now, it's, the structure is classified as structurally deficient. It's posted for load, and it is a very narrow structure. I want to say it's between 20 and 24 feet wide, and, 20 and 21 feet wide. And so a lot of the equipment that the farmers use in that area is too wide to drive over this structure. This is the structure that has big trusses on the side, and so you can't drive a combine over it and, and clear a concrete wall on the side of the bridge, because instead of concrete walls on the side of the bridge, it has large pony trusses. And so if you were to drive a combine over this bridge, it would hit one of those pony trusses. So we've, we've had many conversations with the Township Board members, and one of them is an adjacent landowner, and they indicate that that road will be more traveled with a more functionable structure.
I, I, I mean, that's a lot, that's a big, that's a 500% increase. I guess I'm having trouble understanding how that many combines and everything else don't drive over it now that...
They physically cannot drive over it.
Uh-huh.
They physically cannot drive over it. I've seen that bridge. You couldn't drive a wide little...
No, I understand that, but...
And the combine was just one example that I gave. Any, any farm equipment or even their vehicles, one of the adjacent landowners indicated that his wife chooses to use an alternate route simply because this is a posted structure. It's, it's not a fun structure to drive over. It, it feels like you're enclosed. It's very narrow. And so even though that they live right down the road, his wife chooses to use an alternate route. So it's going to be more than, than farm traffic that will choose to use this road after the structure is replaced. But even with that, you know, going from five to 20 is, is a huge increase. 25 still isn't a big number. It's, it's not a, a road that's going to ever see 150 or 200 cars a day.
Are there any additional questions? Do we know when this bridge is going to start? So we quit talking about it?
We've, I know Jason has had conversations about a pre-bid meeting. I would, I would guess that in April it will start.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Being our representative to Makita, the Minnehaha County Economic Development Association, we actually talked about this, and the representatives from, and mayors from communities around the county were in agreement that our road network is important to the economic prosperity that we have, and they were completely supportive, even though it's not close to every village or town. It's, it's, our road network is vital.
I do not have a motion on this. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid of, the low bid.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you. I thought it was three to two, but...
Commissioner Kelly, how did you vote on that?
Aye.
Okay. Four to one. Thank you.
Moving back to item number 10, is a public hearing to consider a request for rezoning 15-01 to rezone from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District, property legally described as the north 150 feet of tracks 3A, Francis Tracks, South Path, Southwest Quarter, Section 7, Township 102 North, Range 49 West, 25766, 472nd Avenue.
Kevin Hookman, Planning Department. This request, this, to rezone from A1 Agricultural to C Commercial, is located in the northeast corner of the Crooks Renner exit on I-29. All the other corners of the exit are either zoned commercial or industrial, and it's mostly industrial. This property in 2012 was mostly zoned commercial. And so the applicant now is requesting the remaining 150 feet on the north side that you can see here. The remaining 150 feet is a request in order to expand more of, of the storage units that are currently on the location. The reason why it wasn't rezoned in the first place was because there's a building eligibility on this site, and that 150 feet of agricultural land retained that building eligibility, but it is no longer needed by the applicant, and he would prefer to have it as commercial. The Minnehaha County Comprehensive Plan encourages commercial uses at interstate highway intersections and at high-traffic intersections such as this. So it's supported in the Comprehensive Plan. He will have to obtain a conditional use permit in the, in order to expand, to change his, his layout of his buildings, his approved layout. Here's some pictures of the, the property. This is looking to the house in the north. In the past, this property owner has had a certain amount of hesitation about allowing commercial all the way up to the property line, and would prefer some sort of a buffer. And we'll see if, if that property owner is here or not, but she has called and noted It is a gated entrance so that only people who rent units can get in, or who know the past building. And this is a picture of the existing structures that are on the site. We'll be continuing that. And this is a picture of the east property line. It is a lot closer to this neighbor on the east that is already zoned commercial. But as you can see, that, that, this neighbor has a lot of trees buffering it, and the other one did not have that same. So in the aerial view, this is kind of what it looks like, and it would have a approximate zoning area of that, so it will go up to the north by the way.
Are there any questions for Kevin on this property? Commissioner Kelly.
We can't put any conditions on a rezoning, correct?
That is correct.
But we will have an opportunity at the, at the conditional use to talk about putting some sort of tree line or something.
That is correct. And the current conditional use for the site does have a tree line that just has not been planted yet, and the applicant proposes that he's going to move that tree line just to the north, so, to meet up with.
Thank you.
I do have a proposed site plan if you'd like to see that.
It probably doesn't pertain to this anyway, Kevin.
Yeah. It's just for the rezoning at first now.
Just a rezoning at this point. Are there any other questions for Kevin? This is a public hearing. Be interested in hearing to the proponent, if there's someone that would like to speak in favor of this project, or this rezoning, and if you'd identify yourself and give your address.
Good morning Commissioners. Tim Teheart. I live at 25524, 472nd Avenue, about three miles north of this site. And like Kevin said, we didn't rezone the whole thing to begin with because there was a rural residential eligibility up there that we didn't really know what we were going to do with at the time. But I think it'd be more valuable to me and better suited to probably just leave this all, make this all commercial and continue what we've been doing.
Are there any questions for Tim? I have one more question for Kevin. Kevin, couldn't actually that building eligibility be sold to an adjacent landowner? Because as long as it's connecting property, I think you can move building eligibility's.
You can move building eligibility's for adjacent properties of the same landowner. You cannot move it to a different landowner.
Of the same landowner. Okay.
Madam Chair, just to follow up on your question. But just changing it to commercial doesn't mean they lose their building eligibility, does it?
Yes, because the, the site, commercial does not allow residential building.
Right, but the piece of ground still retains that, doesn't it? I mean, should they change it to R1 or whatever it is, they'd have a, you know, 10 years from now?
So if they're to change it to R1, yes, because the R1 would have it buildable by I highly doubt they'd change it back to agriculture, I guess.
Well, I just am wondering if it wouldn't exist in some form if they were to buy the whole section and want to move it to, you know, Timbuktu.
Yeah.
I guess I don't know.
Which, of course, is in Africa and would not apply.
Scott Anderson from the County Planning Department. Kevin's correct that if this was rezoned to R1 Residential, that would be by right, they would just have to create one-acre lots, and each lot would have a building eligibility or the right to build a house on it. When a property is rezoned from Ag to something else, that building eligibility is going to go away.
Okay.
And that, the applicant knows that, and that's why originally, two or three years ago, or four years ago, when we rezoned this, went through this, he left that parcel of property because he wanted to leave all his options open.
Yep.
As he indicated, he now feels that the best and highest use for this property is for commercial uses, and he's decided to go ahead with the rezoning, knowing that that building eligibility will go away.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions for Kelly?
Kevin, did you say that they can only move an eligibility if, if the owner, the owner can move it from one piece to another?
Yes, it has to be the same property owner.
But there's a value in building eligibility's. I thought you could sell it. For instance, if the guy on the north wanted to buy that eligibility, he could.
He cannot. He would have to buy the land.
All right. Scott, where am I confused?
It can be, Scott Anderson from the Planning Department again. This, it can be done. The, let's say the property owner, which you see that farmstead to the north of that property, if he wanted, I mean, typically how this is done is that property owner to the north would have to buy some or all of that parcel that you're looking at in the black. Then they would transfer that building eligibility from that parcel back up to the north, to the north parcel, and then that, that building eligibility that would, was on that 150-foot strip would be gone. It would be, we would trans, we would physically move that building permit eligibility number to the parcel to the north, and it would be gone. However, I mean, that's an economic, that's, that's a real estate economic transaction, and I don't know if Mr. Teheart has approached any of his property, his surrounding property, or just saying, hey, do you want to buy this for 60, 70,000? And that's typically what building permits or building eligibility's go for. So... So, it's sort of a free-market issue and...
Okay, well, I just, I know this doesn't have anything to do with rezoning, but I was curious.
Yeah, it's just kind of a hypothetical question.
I was curious.
It can be done. I mean, you're going to, there's going to have to be some real estate purchasing and then moving the eligibility, and then maybe selling that real estate back to the original property owner. That's typically how these things go. I mean, it's several steps, and there's a cost in that as well.
Okay. We'll get back to our public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this zoning? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this zoning? I don't see any, so back to the Commission.
Make a motion to approve the rezoning. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning from A1 agricultural to C commercial district property. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kevin.
Item 11 is a public hearing to consider a request for rezoning 50-02 to rezone from the A1 agricultural district to I-1 light industrial district. The property is legally described as track 1, Souls Edition, southeast quarter, southeast quarter, section 22, township 102 north, range 48 west, 25985, 482nd Avenue. David Heinold.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Heinold, Planning Department. Ben Souls, Corson Properties LLC submitted a rezoning request to rezone the parcel of land before, too far there. It's a strip of land that is directly adjacent to South Dakota Highway 11 and Hemlock Boulevard. It sits between the Midwest Railcar Facility to the northwest and a couple of commercial properties, bottoms-up bars right there along the highway. The rezoning request for this property is from the A1 agricultural district to the I-1 light industrial district in the unincorporated area known as Corson for future development. Notice of this hearing was published on February 9th in the Argus Leader. The Planning Commission, before I get to that, actually, I just wanted to go through a couple of things as far as the properties to the northwest are zoned, I-1 light industrial, and just to southeast of that is zoned commercial in the triangle portion right along the highway. The petitioner indicated that the property would be used for warehousing and light manufacturing. Light manufacturing, of course, would take a conditional use permit to obtain that with the proposed rezoning. Just wanted to mention some things. On the 1998 Comprehensive Development Plan, it recognizes that the unincorporated area of Corson is located within the transition area of Brandon. And according to the proposed, to the 2035 Brandon Comprehensive Plan, this area is planned to include a mix of industrial and commercial, as we are already seeing in the area, in the incorporated area of Corson. Staff believes that the subject property is influenced by the growth of the Brandon industrial park just to the, a couple of miles to the west railroad and highway accessibility on that lot. On January 13th, 2015, staff inspected the site and determined that the proposed rezoning change would be in the best interest and intent of the zoning ordinance with respect to future growth. Staff found that the proposed rezoning meets the goals and policies of the 1998 Comprehensive Development Plan. The site builds on an existing commercial industrial area that's notable throughout the eastern half of Minnehaha County. Staff recommended approval of rezoning 15-02 to rezone subject property from A1 agricultural to the I-1 light industrial district. And the Planning Commission also voted unanimously five to zero to recommend approval of rezoning So, if you have any questions, feel free to answer those.
Any questions for David on this one?
Are all those buildings on that site right now empty?
These are, yes. To answer that question, I think the petitioner will be able to answer some of those questions.
Okay.
But I believe some of them aren't empty.
Any other questions for David? Okay. Is the petitioner here? You want to come up and identify yourself and give us your address, please?
I am Ben Souls, and 2612 Augusta Street. Brandon is my address. I'm a mile south and a mile east. This is a property that is neighboring to the Minnehaha County-owned property that I talked to you guys about last week. It makes a good entrance to the new industrial park to the west, and that's kind of why I wanted to be rezoned I-1 and warehousing for the industrial apartment or industrial zone.
Are the buildings empty at this point? I don't know if that really matters.
Elevator, the grain elevator is to be demolished. The next one to the south is now gone. The other one is to be dismantled and moved, and the further south one is rented, and that one will stay.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any, are there any other questions? Commissioner Park?
Ben, inasmuch as you were here last week talking about acquiring those Minnehaha County properties, where are they on this, on this map here?
Just along Hemlock, just to the east.
Are they right there on the corner of the highway, then?
One is on the corner of the highway, and one is just adjacent to the east of the...
So, you own all those properties as well, then?
No, I only own the outlined in red.
Okay.
On that map, there's the south lots that are on grass. It's, there's four lots on there, and there are two of them are the county-owned lots.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Ben?
That one?
Right.
Yeah. That one. Yep.
So, that's, that's the corner that you were looking at last week?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Is there any opposition to this? Is there anybody speaking against this change of zoning? Seeing none, Commission?
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to rezone from A1 agricultural to one, I-1 light industrial property. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, while we're still in this, looking at this part of the county, what's the status of the property transfer that we talked about last week? Has there been any action taken to see what legal requirements we have about possibly giving or selling that property?
I don't know that we know that yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 13, authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with the city of Sioux Falls for city reimbursement to Minnehaha County for micro-surfacing on a portion approximately 1.33 miles of six-mile road. D.J. Boothby.
Commissioners, this agreement is with the city of Sioux Falls, similar to the agreement that we had last year with Hartford as part of our chip seal project, where we are, we have a project for pavement preservation, and the municipality that is alongside this project wishes for us to continue our project through their jurisdiction of the part of the roadway, and they pay for 100% of the costs on their jurisdiction. This micro-surfacing project is along six-mile road, and the city of Sioux Falls has jurisdiction over a portion of that, and so, they have agreed that they wish our project to continue through their part of it and would like to pay for it. And this is just formalizing that agreement. Has been reviewed by both city and, or city attorney staff and Kirsten, too. So, if you have any questions about the agreement or the intent of it, I can answer them now.
Any questions for D.J.? Look for a motion.
Submit.
I have a motion and a second. Motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with the city of Sioux Falls for reimbursement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, D.J.
Thank you.
Item 14 is an update and status report of the 90th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson of the County Commission Office. Got an update on a number of bills that we've been tracking through the session. There's a, obviously, we're starting to wind down. We've got a couple of our bills are up for, bills that we've been watching most intently are up for hearings today, and then a couple others are coming, coming soon. I guess the first bill that I would ask you to look at, and this is going to be on page, page three of your memo, is the highway bill, the House Bill 1131, Act to Advise Certain Taxes and Fees to Fund Improvements to Public Roads and Bridges in South Dakota. And this is up for a hearing today in House State Affairs. Obviously, this has been, has got quite a bit of attention over the past year or more. Summer study, the current version is the one that did come out of the governor's office, has about 50 million total in it to be dispersed across the state. And again, we will know more after, after today, because this will be its first, first committee hearing. So, that would, that will give, should give some direction of any changes that may still be asked for in that bill and what that may look like as it continues to move forward. Next bill that I would talk about is one I've been asked about and one I've pushed some information out to you on in the last couple, last week, and that was House Bill 1227, Act to Authorize Counties to Impose Sales Tax, Sales and Use Tax. And that did make it out of House taxation last week, and that is expected to be debated on the floor either today or tomorrow. Just wanted to review some of the provisions of that bill. It is a, it says counties may, so it is, gives counties the option, and that would be enacted by ordinance and by action of the county commission. Maximum is 2%, and if, if a county commission chose to take that action, that is also referable. So, that, again, is, that was not one that came out of the association. This is, this is one that we were not really expecting. It was, a number of individual legislators brought that. Generally, as you know, most of the bills that would have such a direct impact on the counties a lot of times, but not always come out of the association. This is one of those cases where that was not the case, and obviously, we're going to keep you, keep you up to date on that one as it moves forward. Because that one was specifically brought to my attention. Do you have any, are there any questions or anything that I can answer for you about that?
Do you know if this has to take a two-thirds majority?
You know, I was just taking a second look through the, through the bill language, and I don't see that. But before I tell you definitively, I would want to...
It's a tax bill, that's why I...
Exactly. That's what, what made me take a second look. Again, I would, I would need to look at it, study it a little closer. Senate Bill 2, moving, scrolling down a few pages. Again, we've talked about this a couple of times to establish river-based and natural resource districts across the state. Passed the Senate, come over to the House side. It has not been assigned a committee schedule, been scheduled for a hearing yet. But again, we've watched that because that would be a rather substantial difference in the way drainage issues and water across the state is managed with the creation of nine of these, of these districts. Continues to be a wait-and-see, but if it were enacted, would likely certainly have some impact on, on the county. Senate Bill 73 is another one that the juvenile, generally known as the juvenile justice bill. It got a lot of attention at the beginning of the session. I don't have any immediate update for you. It's been, it's been a little while since it's made its next progression through the process. So, it would just tell you that we're continuing to watch it. It seems to be not reflecting a lot of activity on the schedule, which would tell me that there's some, some internal discussions going on, and I cannot tell you the flavor of the tone of any, what any of those would be, but it's a, obviously, a major, would be a major piece of legislation, and we watch each week, even though I haven't spoken with you about it in a number of weeks. And Senate Bill 81 is, again, one that mentioned to you a couple of times that any person convicted of driving a vehicle while under the influence of drugs or alcohol, convicted of such a crime in addition to other fees and penalties, would owe a fee of $50 to a county general fund as recognition of expenses incurred by counties related to prosecuting those activities. So, those are the bills that I was going to bring to your attention. If you have any other questions, please feel free to ask.
Are there any other questions for Robert concerning legislative issues? Okay. Thanks, Robert.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Okay.
The next item is new business.
We have a little bit of new business. I met last week with a couple of gentlemen and with planning to talk about a water district up in the area between Hartford and Humboldt, and just starting to look at that. It's a water district that is no longer functioning, but their culverts have collapsed, or those drainage pipes have collapsed. They're from like the 1920s. Their concern is that as those things, as those culverts collapse, or those drainage pipes collapse, these, their rural township roads are going to start to be underwater. And in a more significant way, they feel than we had with the Scott-Slew issue a few years ago. We're working with them to see how we can possibly help them move forward with the water district. I think it is extremely important for us because if we start having township roads underwater, we are decreasing our accessibility to those areas, and we're going to have townships scrambling to figure out how they're going to fix their roads because all of a sudden they need bridges instead of culverts, and they need bridges. They're not really culverts, they're drainage pipes. And so, we're going to work through and see how we can help them or at least direct them in moving forward with a drainage district in that area. And so, we will keep you posted as we learn more.
Okay. Is there any other new business? Is there any old business? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for litigation and personnel.
That's my motion.
Second and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.